We called a meeting of December 18, 2014, 7 o'clock. Roll call please.
Chairman Patanaster?
Here.
Vice Chair Ophelia?
Here.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Here.
Philip Dahlmar?
Here.
David McMahon?
Here.
Deborah Purnier?
Here.
Diane Bumbach?
Here.
Scoot to the flag please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, visitors, comments? Scoot the representatives.
I'll start off. On December 5th, the NVHS National Honor Society sponsored their annual gingerbread mowers event in high school cafeteria. The students participated in teams of four and the faculty was provided the opportunity to vote on what they believed to be the most creative gingerbread house during the faculty meeting on December 8. Next, on the same night of this event, the NVHS GSA sponsored a fundraising event at the NV auditorium where the 1982 NVHS graduate Tony Ferriola spoke about his personal experiences during the following year in the following high school. Tony's life was featured in film and he will return to NVHS in January to provide a professional development workshop for all certified staff focusing on the topic of transgender identity. His presentation will include the state and federal acts that govern schools and the issues that some teenagers face as they progress through their teen years and then adulthood. Also, throughout the month of December, the NVHS Helping Hands organization is sponsoring a tour of tree drives for local families in need. The target is 500 irons and at this time, the group has collected 400 irons. They are dedicated and driven to reach their goal by the pushing of the drive on December 18.
The NVHS Winter Concert was held on December 10th. The selections performed by concert band, chorus, and select chorus. The NVHS music program was performed tomorrow morning to the NVIS eighth graders. This performance is one of several initiatives to provide middle school students with the experience that connects the NVHS high school to the middle school. Also, members of the North Bradford Senior Center visited the high school on December 12th. Take part in the annual event put on by the High School Student Council. Citizens were provided with a selection of seasonal songs which were performed by the high school chorus and concert choir. They were also accompanied by the jazz ensemble and then finished off with rally for freshmen to veterans. Also, later that night, the NVHS Unified Sports and Best Buddies Program co-sponsored a trip to Milford to see the Nott project. The two groups rode in styles, Datto had donated a couple of tour buses. Members of both programs were astonished about the trip and it has provided an opportunity for students to connect and see the seasonal production full fun in education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you want to mention any design insurance? I don't want to put you on the spot, I don't want to call you out on it, but...
Yeah, but...
I did design it.
Really nice. We have things, thank you. That was great.
I was there filming. It should be on Poppy Access Channel pretty soon.
What, Saturday's game is filmed?
Yes.
Any questions?
Thank you.
About being on the sideline with other press pass? Do you want to bring that up, did you?
You were also... I'll be part of the presentation tomorrow morning.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday guys. Thank you, see you January. All right, approval of the previous minutes of November 20th?
I move to approve the minutes of November 20th, 2014 Board of Education meeting as submitted.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patanaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ophelia?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Upstate.
Philip Dahlmar?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
All right, move on, personnel, no resignations, appointments.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Michelle Allegio, is that how you say it, to the position of school librarian at North Bradford High School. Effective January 5th, 2015, Ms. Allegio will be placed on a master's step seven in accordance with the contract between the North Bradford Board of Education and the North Bradford Federation of Teachers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patanaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ophelia?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Dahlmar?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
I'd like to thank the board on behalf of the high school. I know they are so excited. Michelle is here this evening with her husband and a very successful career with the Hammond School System, specifically Winter Rain, through the ACES program. And I know that she is going to be greatly missed. She was a Teacher of the Year and handed recognition by many accolades for her commitment to students. And we are so fortunate to have her joining our team at the high school. So I want personally to recognize and thank you and welcome you to our high school team. We are excited.
Thank you, and I just wanted to stop in tonight just to say thank you to everybody for this opportunity. So very much appreciated.
How bad did I butcher your name? What's that? How bad did I butcher your name?
Oh no, you did a super job. I think it was perfect.
Welcome to Bob.
Thanks for stopping by, thank you.
Thank you very much. All the same, happy holidays. Thank you.
You too, thanks. Leaves none at this time, superintendent report.
Well, it's truly an honor. We have our North Bradford Teacher of the Year here, Ms. Heidi Pressdash. I'm just going to read a little bit of a brief bio. You have it in your board packet. I don't know if you have the opportunity to go through. There's a list of things that Ms. Pressdash has been associated with over her years here, including the ELA Curriculum Development, PBIS, and our high school principal search. She's a great leader in the building. She has represented the teaching staff with grace. I was fortunate enough on December 2nd to accompany her to the State Department of Ed presentation Teacher of the Year program. And it was truly an honor to be with Ms. Pressdash that night. So without further ado, I'd like to formally recognize her. We have a very small token of appreciation for her. I'm going to have her take the walk of family. I know my photo team is here. Quick photo, so without further ado, Ms. Pressdash, if you would please come forward. I'll let you shake first and then you can...
Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, we're lucky to have you.
Congratulations. A graduate of North Bradford High School. And that evening, siblings were there and family members, that were graduates of the high school as well. So it was a wonderful evening.
Yes, it was wonderful.
Let me take one more. If you're ready, I'm going to step in.
I'm here, I'm here, my motivation.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Congratulations. Under student recognition, our Middlesex County Superintendent's Association held a awards banquet in Old Sabre approximately two weeks ago on December 1st. And we were so fortunate and proud to have Maggie Forgoti and Chris Krulik as our representatives this year. And if you had a chance to read their biographies, they are truly representative of what we hope to instill in all our young students. They're well-rounded, wonderful, wonderful people who have taken advantage of the many opportunities that the high school. And I know Mr. Steffler, who was also present with me that day, was so proud of the two. Their families were there. It's a wonderful day and you're surrounded with other recipients, excuse me, from the Shawneine Schools. And to sit and read their bios and what these kids are embalmed with and looking to go on and do great things, it certainly bodes well for what we're hoping to do with all of our students. So congratulations to both students and thank you, Mr. Steffler, for being there to support those students. Excuse me, your board briefs are included in your board packet, as you can see. The buildings have been busy. There's a number of things going on around the holiday season and the professional development opportunities and people coming in and sharing and doing things. The senior, I was fortunate enough to be at the senior concert last week and they truly, truly love sitting and chatting with our students and hearing them perform. And we thought next year would be a nice opportunity to potentially move that here to the senior center because we know that transportation can be an issue for many. And if we were to come to them here, we could potentially capture many more of the seniors in the community who would enjoy that. So we have the kitchen here, our food, classes could come up and prepare, our students could perform, and then we could have a critical questions party here. So that's better for next year.
Can I comment on one of them?
One of the seniors?
No, one of the school quarterbacks?
Okay.
From the board briefs, that's where I'm at, aren't we?
Yes. I thought you were referring to one of the senior citizens. I was going to say, well, it's dependent upon what you say.
No, they're all...
They're all... Go ahead.
I went to the intermediate school play. It was phenomenal. I had no clue I was watching intermediate school kids. They did a fantastic job. I loved whoever's idea it was to have the assigned seating this year. It just eliminated all that line up at the beginning so everybody could get good seats. I mean, there's not really that seat in there. They did a phenomenal job. I was so impressed. I was so impressed with their singing, their acting, they were great. It was...
It was a wonderful show.
Murray and Diane and I went. Fantastic. They did a great job. Can't wait to see what next year has.
Thank you. Okay, there's a letter from the State Connected Workers Commission. Don, do you want to...
Well, it's not really that exciting. We have a health and safety committee and we meet quarterly and one of, I mean, we have to, we have to meet anyway. And one of the benefits of being involved with the program is that we also have a network of treatment for workers' comp. So we can do a better job controlling those issues. So that's it. It's a committee of maybe 10 or 12 people.
Thanks, Don. Okay, moving right along. It's that time of year when we discuss and approve the public choice seats and the ways seats that we provide for two students that we gave this year. And the past week, we had 26 seats that we fill. We strongly, we strongly support or continue to support all this program and the diversity that brings to North Bradford. Our students have done fabulous in the school district and have been, have brought such great energy and experiences to our students. And we truly benefit by having them on, be a part of our school system. So that being said, I ask that you continue to support the 26 seats. And I know I speak on behalf of those students who look forward to being a part of our school system.
I'll make a motion to increase public choice for the 2015 sixteen school year with its continuation of 26 seats.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
So I have a quick question about the one vacancy for next year. I know that our plan is to just keep that vacant so that we can fill it. So does that mean that, and I apologize for not understanding this, that we have 26 students that are...
Students that moved through do not re-enter into the lottery.
Okay.
Any outgoing seniors are then filled.
Okay.
So if we have a student that may transfer out, we would try to fill it. If we couldn't fill it during the year, we'd wait till the end of the year and we work closely with the ACES on making sure all seats are filled.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Roll call please.
Chairman Patanaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ophelia?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Dahlmar?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
Okay, and lastly, there's an item to discuss, the Office of Civil Rights, and with a motion, we'll discuss that in the executive session.
Would this be a time to amend the agenda?
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda of the December 18, 2014 Regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patanaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ophelia?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Dahlmar?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to add discussion of a certified candidate under Section 7 Personnel Item B Appointments to the Agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patanaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ophelia?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Dahlmar?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
And so that's another item that will be done in the executive session.
Okay, we move on to committee reports, negotiations?
We're still plodding along. The schedule of December has got a little bit tougher, but we're going to hit the ground running again in January. So hopefully we'll have some more information for you then.
Thank you, Don. Budget and operations?
Well, two things. We met as a budget subcommittee. There really is nothing remarkable to report for the 14-15 budget. But we also have, we have the need because of a placement of a student who has a need for air conditioning. And so we had to bid the installation for two rooms at Totucket Valley. We actually had two bidders and this is the low bidder. And so we asked for your support in awarding this bid to New Start Rentals LLC.
I do want to add that these are two of our larger rooms, the Van Gooen and the Park Room. Dr. Lindsay?
The general music room.
General music.
Yeah, yes.
And they are multifunctional rooms that this student obviously passes through and spends time in. They are also rooms that get quite a bit of use, not only during the academic year, but after school for programs, activities, and then in the summertime as well. So there's long-term advantages to these rooms being climate controlled with the materials that they have in the rooms that need to be stored in an environment that is not living.
Is there any maintenance included in this price? Any ongoing maintenance of the units at all?
No. No, this is just the purchase and installation.
I'll make a motion to award the installation of two ductless split air conditioning systems at Totucket Valley Elementary School to New Start Rentals LLC in the amount of $14,537.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patanaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ophelia?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Dahlmar?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, move on to curriculum instruction and continued planning.
So Tracy did an overview earlier today on the social studies slash district. What is the correct term?
Social studies frameworks.
Okay, thank you. Which was initially approved or, okay, thank you. And then barring any major roadblocks, will be, a final margin will be approved in February and then we can start planning or we can start planning now for some changes to curriculum.
The frameworks were approved, give initial approval by the State Board of Education. They will look to approve a final draft or a final copy in February. What this does is really talk about specific local, state, national, and global history in terms of content and a new inquiry-based approach to teaching social studies. It really does, it is more appropriate to the meaning of common course A standards and the literacy expectations that we have within those standards. And we would actually have, I'd like to just say thank you to Carrie Zabata. She is a teacher at TBS and an author of the new frameworks and has devoted many hours to helping the state and the discipline move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to attention, our meeting, policy.
Okay, well, we have some, two policies to approve. So I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P 1290 Confidentiality and Access to Education Records as Simultaneous.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patanaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ophelia?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Dahlmar?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
And we have another policy. I'd like to make a motion to approve policy P 2400 Prevention and Report of Child Abuse as Simultaneous.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Patanaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ophelia?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Dahlmar?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Yes.
Move along to ACES.
We had two meetings in December. The first one was our normal ACES board meeting. The only thing of consequence is that we're in negotiations to buy the lead of Hill Building. It used to be SNET. Uses an enormous amount of space and hopefully it'll go through.
Now, where is that?
Probably not in that meeting.
And the second meeting, we had a liaison meeting with the ECA, which is the Educational...
Center for the Arts.
Center for the Arts in De Haven. We had that last Wednesday. Very interesting, very interesting. They're all in this one four-story building and there's artworks and sculptor rooms and painting rooms and poetry readings and dance classes and, except for the lunch, it was absolutely enjoyable afternoon.
You're not enjoying their lunch, too?
The lunch was horrible. The worst I've ever been.
And how many of our students, not to put you on the spot?
Three. We have three students in dance there. Over 700 students have applied for entry next year. They'll accept 70. So this past year, we had 10 apply from our middle school and 100 students accepted. Tracy was present at the luncheon, as was I, and we had two guidance counselors there as well. And as, as the goal I mentioned, it's a spectacular program. It's things that we cannot do and offer to our students. And you sense the energy when you walk in that building. The students are passionate about what they do, whether in the writing program, the dance program, the theater program, or the arts. And so I want to thank Tracy for being there and I thank the board for continuing to support our program.
Just great job.
I will say though, that although it was a spectacular program, we have our students, an artwork in our high school right now that's the equal of anything they have.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And our kids can dance as well.
I have no idea.
Thank you, thank you.
Move on to building committee.
Who was not here? I mentioned at the last meeting that I had to be at conferences that evening. I don't know who.
All right, communications?
Okay, you want to take it or you want me to call?
Oh, you can and I'll fill in our pictures.
We had a communication committee meeting. We went over the calendar for the next year and we've canceled a number of meetings this past year.
Committee meeting, calendar?
Subcommittee meetings, yes. Just because we didn't really have anything to really go over. So we eliminated a bunch of meetings. I think we narrowed it down to like five throughout the year.
Right.
So we all agreed on that. We talked about...
And just to talk about the calendar, too?
Capital projects, we discussed.
We eliminated some meetings due to the fact that like it's in budget season, so we're meeting with them anyway. So it's not that there isn't an interaction or we don't have an interaction with them. We're just already in need that month.
Right, right.
Or in the summer.
Right, the summer, we really didn't need, you know, there's a couple in a row because they have to do it at the end of the year and the line item transfers and all that kind of stuff. We talked about capital projects. An update on, we gave an update on the track and the bathrooms at the high school. And a lot of things, a lot of things should be happening this summer. In the spring, the redoing of the track, the bathrooms at the high school over the summer, science room at the high school over the summer, the roof at Totucket Valley over the summer. So we just sort of touched base on all of that.
We also talked about the sharing of IT services. And I actually had a quick question. I know that's not solidified and all figured out, but there will be cost savings associated with that, obviously, because...
For the town.
I was just going to ask it. Is it all town? So...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
In a perfect world, it's our manpower servicing and assisting them with troubleshooting. Do you want to piggyback on anything that I'm...
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
We have not finalized anything. There's just preliminary talks on it as far as, you know, unless they had talks without.
Would these be finalized or at least an idea of a number of savings during budget season, prior to budget season?
Before we entered into any agreement, we would want to know, obviously, if it's going to put a strain on our personnel and their availability and what it would look like if we were to house the infrastructure at NVIS and service it and what that would look like and if they had access to that building on weekends and nights when we're not there.
Sure.
So there's many questions to have answered before we enter into that agreement.
Yeah, we've had discussions. They are moving their equipment into our building. So that is going to happen sometime in January. They've already connected to, the state has connected their fiber connection to our building so they have access to the internet through the state network.
But their servers will be separate for all?
Yes, it will be a separate network. Their traffic will not go over anywhere.
Right.
And there was talk of propane lines, gas lines.
I'll use that word, okay, right now. Gas lines.
Gas lines.
Oh, okay. We did need regarding the potential for an extension of natural gas lines running and servicing the Northford section where we currently are in Totucket Valley, the fire station, ambulance barn, and several residential neighborhoods. The council would have to act on it in a very short timeframe as they would like to start construction early summer and complete it, obviously, before the next heating season. So there is potential there for significant savings. But I caution you, we are in agreement for, we made an agreement for fuel purchasing for next year. We do have the amount that we believe to run our buildings, especially those that are not dual-fired. So there would have to be an agreement with, you know, what we would do with that if we were to move forward and convert these to gas facilities.
And we didn't bring that up. The gas company approached the town.
It was, correct.
Typically, what happens when they do that is they want to lock you in on that fuel source. And one of the things that happened this year, it's a bit unusual, is because the price was so low that our consortium has already committed to, well, the diesel fuel we would need anywhere, but to the heating oil as well.
As you recall, we buy that and bolt down negotiates with the number of towns and we've been successful in the past at locking the rates that we've saved, you know, substantial money on.
Okay.
Thanks.
Before you move on to business, I did not bring my whole bag tonight where I have all my information. The one time I didn't bring it, and I tried to pull it up on my phone, that's what I was doing, but it said it wasn't downloaded from a server, whatever that means. The list of committees that Anna had sent us last month that we had talked about to see if we were able to fill any of those slots. I didn't bring that list with me with the vacancies and I wasn't able to pull it up on the phone.
I'll obviously go on the one...
The building committee?
Yes. I don't remember when it's been so awful like that.
On Monday, right, the...
On Monday, it's usually the second Monday of the month.
Seven o'clock.
I'll go on that one.
And I think we needed an alternate for, if I remember correctly, did we need an alternate for curriculum?
We didn't have a curriculum, did we?
Uh-huh.
You and I.
And I think we...
I would have no problem with that.
Yeah, me and you.
Okay, so Diane's going to be an alternate and I can...
I'll put her name on every open spot we got. Let's put her in, we might be able to spot the guy.
For policy.
That's all, that's all I kind of remembered.
That was it.
That's all I remembered right now.
And.
All policy, which.
As long back, I assure you, the building committee is very rewarding. I'll see that Don jumped at that opportunity to serve, so I appreciate it.
And the other one, but I know you can't do is policy, right?
I cannot.
Due to seven-thirty in the morning. It's supposed to be a vacancy there.
Policy is, is a committee that, we're, because we've finally gotten through the whole cycle, we're not meeting as often anymore anyway. So that may be less of an issue. We do have that meeting anyway.
Okay.
Seven-thirty in the morning, when?
Whenever they decide.
Whenever it works.
Whenever Dave and Don figure it out, whatever works with their schedule.
Pretty flexible.
You can have me come up.
Okay.
Say, you're a question.
Thanks.
I don't know if you want to deal with COVID at seven-thirty in the morning.
Before we go on, I don't.
I'll bring that.
We're back to the shared technology, you know, okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
They're moving the equipment in before we have a, a clear understanding. I'm a little concerned about that, I just wanted on the record.
No comments, okay.
How, how is, I'll just, I'll keep going. How is that being allowed?
Well, we will have.
Okay, all right, we will.
To be continued.
Okay. Well, to that point, I'm gonna bring up, if the equipment gets damaged, who covers that?
These are a number of items that we need to, I don't know.
But we were, I remember.
With flooding, fire, that being damaged.
Right, well, I, my bet would be flooding before it would be fired, what.
Second flooding, yeah, yeah.
Is it really hard to leave the equipment where it is right now until it is all lined up?
Well, obviously, we're well along the way with the new firewall being running and connected. That was the whole reason for, for getting in is the, for the town was the high speed and.
Right. And is it necessary for them to house their equipment there? The reason they would like to do it is because it has emergency power, it is protected with fire suppression, it's air-conditioned, it's, you know, it's, the room that they have.
I was built specifically for. The generator is housed there, it is the emergency shelter.
I was just gonna say that part of the.
It's better, it is the emergency shelter, it's, it's obviously more advantageous than town hall with the climate control that we have in that building. It's an isolated area, as Don mentioned, is a fire suppression, there's no water in there, it's foam if it was ever emergency.
So.
It's on the second floor.
Was the installation of any of those things, moving the equipment over, the installation of the new fiber wire? Fiber.
Fiber outlets.
Fiber outlets, thank you. Was that, was that out of our pocket?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
No, there's really no cost to us for what's happening to this.
Oh, okay. Okay. No, please don't misunderstand, I'm not opposed to the equipment being here, I just need, I would feel better if there were certain arrangements, agreements already in place, that's what I'm asking. It's not that I don't think if one wants here or it's, or it's better here, you know, more secure. It just, there is a liability, there is, then, then it's here so then it commits us to having our staff available to them until we reach an agreement, or it could potentially commit us, that's all. It's not, I'm not objective to it in any relationship or form, it's just.
One of the advantages is to be able to manage it remotely from our site versus having staff members travel to town halls to fix things that, you know, Mr. Esposito was now servicing when, when their troubleshooting is not available. So he's spending a great deal of time, he's really the IT guy for town hall. And it could be something as simple as wire connection and he's spending time doing that. And if we're able to remotely look at and get on and, and correct it from N V I S, it's obviously saving them a lot of wasted time. But this is only going to be the server piece.
Right.
That this is dealing with. So anything that's going on in town hall currently that has to do with the end users, there is no agreement or.
They farm that out.
For that right now.
They farm that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move on to the board.
I, I commented already on the play that I was able to go to, so.
Our play was, I thought the play was outstanding.
Did you go?
I went, yeah, I had to ringside see Mr. Davis and Keith, they took care of me.
It was a sideshow, right?
Nah, it was, I tell you, it was good. It was really amazing. It really blows your mind how good they are and, and, you know, the limited funds you guys get and, yeah. I mean, the dog was outrageous.
Oh, yes.
Andy was outrageous. The whole, the whole, the whole thing was really. Entire cast and crew, all the students involved, the pit crew. And you look at our, our teaching staff, Ms. Montes, who, those children follow her like the Pied Piper. And I don't care if they're center stage or behind stage, she has a wonderful commanding presence with, with those students. And our musical director and director general, so, the soul, again, passionate and the kids just great girl. Sets are built by our students, painted by our students, the high school works with the middle school, so, you know, a shout out to them and, and the administrative team for supporting them, encouraging them, and making that happen. Not many schools can say that they have a full production that encompasses what it does with that many students involved with that level of professionalism.
And the short amount of time too, I mean, they're in Florida in November and we just started school in September. Are there any talks of a spring show?
Well, the high school, we really don't want to conflict with.
But a smaller something?
Well, honestly, Sharon, because of the, the involvement of the high school direction, that usually takes the spring. Quite honestly, Sharon Montes, our theater arts teacher, does an improv after-school enrichment program in her classroom, which is a black box theater, it's obviously a smaller scale.
Sure.
And parents of the students that perform are invited to attend and they do a whole improv program. And actually, they did two sessions last year. So I think, and I believe they had approximately twenty, thirty students sign up. It's obviously a much smaller scale.
Yeah.
But they do keep that momentum going. A lot of the students who perform in the plays end up coming back and participating in the improv program.
But we do stay away from the high school.
Sure.
For this major spring production.
And then I just wanted to comment on the football team, they made it to states again. Unfortunately, they didn't have a positive outcome, but I think the support was there, our stands were packed. Our stands were absolutely packed and to support the boys and they got a nice thank you to the police department and the fire department. They had a nice little escort. They had a nice little escort to the town line and it was, it was really, really nice. They had people in this town, north and center, holding signs to say how we're doing and whatnot, so it was really nice.
No, it's a, it's a great accomplishment to be there twice in three years. And it's a game and you win some games, you lose some games, but I think obviously the lessons learned and what those boys can take away from that experience will last them a lifetime, so, great job to all of them.
Okay, there will be a free holiday.
We're, we're, I just wanted to say that the Night to Care also went very nice, they had their concert, it's a whole different venue this year. And eighty-seven families will benefit from the Night to Care this year.
Great. And thank you to the, to the board while we're on, thank you for your support of these programs and events and fundraisers and, you know, it goes above and beyond your duties as board members. And it means a great deal, I know, too, when I'm speaking on behalf of the administration when you're there supporting their efforts and supporting our children, so I want to thank all of you for being there.
Thank you. We move on to visitors and press.
Okay, and I'll make a motion to, make a body. Make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section one-dash-two-two-five of the Connecticut General Statute as permitted by section one-dash-two-hundred-six A and E of the Connecticut General Statute to discuss agenda I O S V I I I D.
Second.
Executive session. Roll call, please.
Chairman Patanaster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ophryo?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Philip Dahlmeier?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Diane Bumbach?
Aye. Aye. Is that it?
Yeah.